We're good.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. Your participation is your consent to be rebroadcast on the town's YouTube channel. Roll call, please.
Bill Puzinger?
Present.
Bill Giffen?
Here.
Jenny Monroe?
Here.
Dana Neer?
Here.
Valerie Chardy?
Here.
Please join me for the fledgeable leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the May 23rd meeting. I'm sorry, Karen.
Some people have not seen the minutes yet, so I'm just going to ask you to table that and approve that.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Oh, I guess this is an extra one. Excuse me. New business.
Public concern.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Citizen input and public concern, anyone who wants to address the council? Anyone online? Is there anyone in the room for an ordinance violation? Anyone online? All right, moving on to new business. Paving contract.
Paving bids. Are there any other bids?
We have two that were sailed and delivered, the dates are on the envelope.
All right, first one is EMB Paving Inc. from Rochester, Indiana.
Their financial statement. Form 96. Non-cohesion affidavit. Bid bond. Are there any addendums to the original specs that would need to then?
There was a typo. There was a typo on the streets, that would be corrected.
All right. The total bid amount is $327,700. $327,700. Next is Fenden Brown Inc. from Milford, Indiana. Go in. Give me your knife back. Form 96. Non-cohesion affidavit. Verifiable affidavit, I may have missed out on the other one. Financial statement. And bid bond. Total bid amount is $259,620.
Father, are you guys wanting us just to take this under advisement?
Counsel at this time, yep. Take matter advisement, I'll deliver these, Bob. For consideration.
So move, we take it under advisement?
Certainly.
It's been moved by Mr. Giffen, seconded by Ms. Monroe. Any discussion, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, same sign. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the opioid fund termination.
Last month, I believe, Representative John Project Hope came and made a presentation to you all and requested that we pass our funds received in the opioid distributions over to them. No, no decision was made that night. We did budget for those funds to be spent at some point, and we've given to Project Hope in the past. I didn't know if, I said that I would convey their their request again, and if that's something you want to make, that you would like to move on tonight, that's fine. If you want to wait, that's okay, too. They are asking for elected officials from across the county to participate in Marshall County, let's see, in Marshall County Hope, and it's a meeting on July 3rd at 9:00 a.m. I had their providing officials to come and participate. As we discuss further uses for those funds. And if you do decide that you want to pass those funds along to private hope, I would also ask that we set up some sort of contractor agreement with them. So it's outlined on what those funds are going to be used for.
And I think it could be both restricted and non-restricted funds, right?
Because they're things that those funds need to be used for. So it's not, we can't just go in.
Yeah, and they're program qualifies for both those sets. I was comfortable with the presentation, and to my knowledge, it's the one opioid program in the county that is functioning and it's going toward paying the counselors that I think they had previously received a grant for, and this will extend keeping those people in place. But I don't know how you guys feel about moving forward with the decision.
Dana?
I think we should. Terry, what was the, what was the amount again?
Would be our next dispersment, right?
Is there dis- is there routine happen? And I, I didn't do wrong because I'm going on a separate.
As I thought, Bill.
Okay, Sally. I'm in agreement with giving that or designating those funds for Project Hope. So I think they can better utilize it than us trying to set some kind of a program up here that, you know.
I, I concur with Sally and Jenny for as far as Project Hope is concerned and also Dana, so. Bill, do you have any thoughts? I'm in agreement, okay.
I make the motion to approve that the next dispersment of those funds, both restricted and non-restricted.
Well, I saw we have funds in there right now, we've already received our dispersments.
For 2024? Okay, then I
There's a couple more summits that will be coming our way, so.
And I will make the motion that dispersments for 2024 restricted and non-restricted be submitted to Project Hope via a contract between us and them to provide the position in exchange for these funds.
Ms. Monroe moves. Is there Second by Mr. Moore, any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oh, same sign. Thank you, Jane. Excellent agenda is resolution 2024-003, comprehensive plan.
Yes, President. I have from the Plan Commission 2024-0 this ration of the Plan Commission to approve and adopt the plan. It is signed by Joel Sanderson on the 21st day of May by the approval of the Plan Commission. Submit that to you.
And discussion on part of the council. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve and adopt the resolution to adopt our 2040 with gratitude to me.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Chardy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oh, same sign. Resolution passed. Next is the Republic Service Contract.
Before me, I have the Municipal Materials Management Agreement approved by the council previously. I'm asking that the councils approve that the council president, Bill Cleveridge, sign on behalf of the town of Culver, as well as the council, to approve this contract and enact it at the end of this. Submit that to you, Bill.
I'll move to approve the contract with Public Service.
Second.
Ms. Monroe moves to approve the contract with Public Service, seconded by Mr. Chardy. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oh, same sign.
Yeah. Oh, she should approve and authorize the council president to sign the contract. Sorry about that. I amended it.
Okay.
Whoever's seconding it.
All right, I'll second it. All right, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oh, same sign. Okay. Old business. The Dunes.
The Dune. We have a vote coming up. The scheduled vote, considering the recommendation of major subdivision and the engineering plans for the Dune will be conducted by the Plan Commission this Tuesday or coming Tuesday, June 18th at 6:30 at the Town Hall. A following vote, depending on that, a conditional vote, I should say, depending on the Plan Commission's actions on this vote, will be scheduled for the 27th with the council, and we will have that update after the Plan Commission meeting. Currently, we're looking at the communication, I was in communication with Scott Siple today, some of the areas that were still being discussed are looking positive, the detention area, and Scott said he had a really positive conversation with Chris today, they've got that to a near resolution. We were able to talk a little bit about the water plant and moving forward, we are going to be onlining in that first phase 100 units, so we're confirming the numbers and making sure everything is in place at the water plant, and that will be part of the town managers update, I got that from Midwestern, so we're good. That's it for the Dunes tonight.
The questions or anything for Kevin on the Dunes? If not, Department or EMS?
Yeah. Council, I'd like to come to you tonight after your approval of a power load system or a number two ambulance. Send you all an email and give you a little bit of a heads up, kind of what that's all about. Basically, a power load system, in short here, is basically a loading system that loads the cot with the patient into the ambulance. So basically, it takes the weight off of the employees of loading, of loading the patient. And normally, when the cot right now, both of these cots that we have are set up for the power load, so the number two ambulance already has the cot for it. And these cots weigh roughly around 150 pounds, and then if, you know, if you're talking maybe patient weighs 200, you know, it's easily 350 pounds that we're loading in, or a 200 pound patient really is kind of small the way the patients go. So we already have a power load system in our number one ambulance, and it's paid off dividends like crazy. It's come in handy so many times, we don't have to call for extra help for lifting. You know, it saves, it potentially saves any injuries to the employees, and by having the power load in the second ambulance, we can flip back and forth between both ambulances more often, saving mileage on both. So that's, that's what I feel like the need is for. So basically, Wes Colter has, has been running these numbers for me and has been talking to Striker. Striker has a, what they call an open box power load system there, which is about $5,000 cheaper. We just have to purchase this plate that goes onto the floor of the ambulance. But with the power load system in that plate, we're looking at $26,506.49, and that, that system will still come with the full warranty of a brand new system. And this power load has not been used, it just got opened for a department a few months back, and they decided they didn't want it, so it hasn't been used. And then, you know, it would go to Crossroads Ambulance in Millbury for installation, and installation costs for that are $1,899. And they said they could get it installed in one to two days, so we can, we could just run it up there, it'd be done in two days, and then get back for if we need it. The total cost of installation and everything, we're looking at $28,402.49.
That open box seems like a, that's significant discount, isn't it? I know when I worked in Plymouth.
For not being used.
The price was way more than
Yeah, but brand, brand new, you're looking at over $31,000 for just the unit and not installation, so. We called, we called at the right time, so.
I'd like
That comes out of equipment and, like, we have it in the budget, I assume?
Yeah.
We had talked about last year, we budgeted $75,000. That's where this is coming from. In the gift fund.
In the gift fund.
Yes.
We are looking at primarily, Karen identified funds within the gift fund that's going to be able to cover the majority of this fund, or for this purchase. Oh, yeah.
We got a $20,000 gift that went into the gift fund.
Nice.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve the $20,402.49.
Mr. Giffen. Mr. Giffen's moves to purchase the power lift for $28,402.29. Second by Ms. Turner. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oh, same sign.
Thank you. And lastly, last month, you guys gave me the okay to start interviewing, to fill up the two open spots that we have already budgeted in the, in the salaries. And I had five applications from in-house, I did the interviews, and I, I would like to hire Travis McVicker, who is a follower person. He's worked at Clement, EMF. He's an EMT, he's been part-time here at Culver for two and a half years. I'd like to hire him at $19 an hour. And the second is Richard Money Penny, he's a paramedic, he's a Lefort County medic. He's been at Culver part-time for a year and a half. And I'd like to hire him at $21.
All right, for clarity's sake, those, both of those positions will be, yeah, thank you.
And that fills all of the back bill that we had?
That's all, yep. All, all, all-time staffs.
I'll motion to approve the two hires, Travis at 19 an hour and Richard at 21.
Ms. Monroe moves to hire Mr. McVicker at $19 and Mr. Money Penny at 21.
Second.
A second by Mr. Giffen, is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oh, same sign.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mike?
That's all.
Okay.
Better be.
That way it keeps them going. So what started this idea was West Shore last year, middle of June, it was super hot, the guys were out there for hours. I myself made granola bars out there to them, and growing up with a father in the volunteer fire service doing the same thing, I wanted to make sure that we could make sure they were taking care of us.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry, I got a question on your fireworks.
Yeah, sir.
Is that for Lake Fest, is that for the
One of the lives, Lake Fest, one of them is supported by.
Four each time, or?
No, those are two separate shows.
Okay.
So there's two other shows besides that that are private.
Okay.
Went through the permit process, where they're going to have their fireworks as their own personal thing, so they'll get out over there, so that's where it was at. Also, I'd like to add on to Julie's thing, I think there's openings. Anybody doesn't have to be a wife or a significant other, anybody that wants to join the organization free to contact Julie.
Julie, is there a way, if we want to support you as, as a citizen, and I would like to donate to that, do we donate to a specific fund, the auxiliary, or do we donate to the fire fund, or?
So the auxiliary has their own funds.
Okay.
If you want to donate directly to the auxiliary, you can't, or you can donate directly to the department. As for members, right now, until we get established, we're kind of keeping it in-house, but down the road, we could be open to having community involvement in it.
Okay.
Are you going to apply for 501(c)(3)?
They're actually running through ours.
They're running through yours, okay.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's a question that people will ask.
Very good. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Terry.
Hi.
Wayne?
Just a couple things, I just kind of reiterate what Terry's saying about the Special Olympics, best quarter of last year, this year, good event. Had a lot of people coming out all the streets. Keep a good step off. Good thing, you didn't actually go get a lot of kids in. We just recently got done with a lot of our business stuff in May, and obviously there's summer stuff, you know, it's kind of maybe hot.
It's raining, it seems like it's raining all the time.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Wayne. Amber?
We just have our annual staff social, or annual staff appreciation day, that's on Monday, so just a reminder, will be closed. Just no lifeguards on duty, no concessions and all that stuff. It's just swim at your own risk on Monday. We have our first upcoming outdoor movie, that'll be next Friday at the Outdoor Amphitheater. And then our first outdoor concert will be the 29th, so that's kind of June for us. Yeah, other than that, it's going to be hot, so we're anticipating a pretty busy weekend down at the beach this, this weekend. All of our staff is officially certified as of yesterday, all our lifeguards, our lifeguards are in the process of becoming water safety instructor certified right now. I sent out all the information for some lessons that fill up within 24 hours, so we have full participation in swim lessons, including wait lists, so definitely a lot of interest there, so we're happy to see that. That'll be through the month of July, because it'll be WSI certified by that point, so. That's it. Oh, yeah, I guess the other important sea pier is done. All spaces are available.
All the piers are in now?
Every single pier piece is in.
Okay.
Good. Thanks for that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else, Amber?
That's all.
Utility, Bob? Anybody in the council? I'd like to thank you for the yellow paint. I'm sure it was, I'm sure it's a team effort, but it certainly looks good.
She got the sun pan going.
We're coming to you, we need your advice, Wayne.
Is that, was that with the new machine?
Yeah.
Does it work pretty well?
Just on record that it worked more than pretty well, I think in two days, fair.
Wow.
We've gone through 45-ish.
Forty, yeah, forty.
About 40 to 45 gallons of paint, which would be the accumulation of about two years' worth of painting.
Easily.
Yeah, so, yeah, good job. Get some yellow down, make Phil happy.
Thank you. Town managers report.
Yes, sir, we've got several things I've got to request. The first request that I make of the council is for a approval of a quote from Blue River Technologies, the leader in geotextile sledge delivery wiring system, if you wanted to know, there's leads away. Um, the amount is for eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. This is for the container bags at, at the wastewater. Um, they are used for collecting and removal of sludge away.
And that, I believe that includes a pile of polymer.
It sure does include a fifty-five gallon drum of emulsion polymer. But wait, there's more. So we're looking at eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Isn't that pretty low, actually? Is it lower than past years? I feel like we've done more than that before.
Can't speak towards that. This seems like a fair deal. I asked the council to approve the eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars, if you will, please.
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Monroe, second by Mr. Sharty. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, same sign.
Got that bag issue out of the way. Now we're going to move on. I've got a, we set the RFP out for the tree removal. Uh, Bob and I have been in conversation and we reviewed and we are going to recommend, uh, Tree Lancers. What we're looking at beyond not only the fifteen trees we identified on the list for removal, but they added an additional three trees. Um, the first cost for the fifteen that were bitted out in the RFP is thirteen thousand. Bob has budgeted fifteen thousand for that. Um, if we add the three trees that they have suggested, um, which are in need of removal, we're looking at a price of sixteen thousand. That in true, uh, includes stump removal. Uh, at that sixteen thousand, that would consume fifteen thousand of Bob's budget. And we have, uh, with the tree commission, they've agreed to provide some additional funds for those extra three to remove. Normally, that would probably come to a cost of about nineteen thousand dollars, maybe a little bit more in change. So I'm going to ask for an approval for Tree Lancers to be our contractor for the tree removal for twenty twenty-four.
So much.
Been moved by Ms. Monroe, a second. Second by Mr. Near. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
Thank you. We're going to stay on the topic of trees. The, I was approached by the plan commission set in a meeting. Uh, they want to secure Dogwood Hills Trees Farm to come to Culver for a two-day, uh, process, uh, pruning the town. Um, it, we're looking at, uh, two days at two thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars a day. That includes two guys pruning trees from the ground and off ladders, uh, and a day rate at seven hours in town. Um, we will be responsible for cleanup. That price does not include it. It's five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars total and we should get some good results. We've had probably about three or four phone calls about tree, low hanging trees and branches that are in need of it. So this is something that would benefit the town. I asked for the approval of five thousand five hundred and fifty on behalf of the tree commission to Dogwood Farms. Our tree farm, there we go.
I'll make a motion to approve that request.
Mr. Sharty moves to approve the request, a second. Second by Mr. Near. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
Thank you, Council. Couple updates quickly. I attended the MACOG Regional Housing Stakeholder Meeting on five thirty twenty twenty-four. It was an excellent meeting. It was up in South Bend. Attended primarily by realtors, financial institutions, developers and, and some municipal government officials. Uh, some takeaways really quickly from that meeting and they were quite knowledgeable, I'll tell you. There's a lack of mid-range housing right now. We're seeing development of subsidized homes. We're also seeing that five hundred plus development happening. What we're not getting is that mid-range price. Mid-range price now, according to their definition, is three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand. That surprised me. Um, the second takeaway, it's the pattern is rental and not ownership. With the interest rates as they are, the toughest demographic to target and keep inside of a town or a city is the twenty to thirty-five-year-old. In order to capture that demographic, rentals have to be available at a price point that's somewhere between twelve thou- or twelve hundred and about fifteen hundred dollars. Um, there's a lack of land in Elkhart and St. Joe County. That was expressed numerous times and it was expressed with concern because right now you have a GM battery plant going in up there. You have Amazon going in up there and you have Microsoft going in up there. These are all database jobs with the exception of the GM plant. They're database hybrid type jobs and we are in play for that housing. According to the people that I spoke with, the developers and two bankers, they were convinced that we will see some of that demographic coming down this way. One of the gentlemen told me, why not live on a lake if you can? And that wasn't a bad idea. Um, the, the one thing that, that is clear is that what developments are seeking now is mixed-use housing as well as the ability to capture somebody throughout their lifecycle, which I found that interesting, that you're able to stay within a community and graduate from an apartment or a rental type situation to a housing situation, to a homeowner. And so that was a nice update. Um, moving on, uh, yesterday, we had the pleasure, Bob and I, Bill Clevenger, uh, we met with Midwestern Engineering to do a walkthrough through the water plant, anticipating the online of well C and schedule improvements that are going on with well B. We did some confirmation of where we're at. I was kind of surprised, well A, I think if we calculated correctly, is approximately seventy years old, our well A. Well B, yep, well, it B is maybe slightly younger, but not much, sixty-something. Um, yeah, well C is getting ready to come online and we're starting to look towards that. Uh, we're pretty confident we're going to get good capacity out of that, talking with Bob. The other thing we kind of looked at i- i- is the need to understand what our infrastructure development is going to be over the next ten years. Uh, I've asked Midwestern and Scott Cycle to make an addendum to our current wastewater study to give me a price and an understanding of a, an amended study to the current wastewater. He said he's confident he can provide that for the next meeting. And I will put that in front of the council so they can consider that addendum to the, to the water plant. I think it will provide much-needed data and information so we can do some planning in terms of infrastructure development.
So what happens with the old well? Do they get taken offline or are you still keep off the online?
Three in service, we can rotate.
Okay. I just wondered when they get to a certain age, if they ever have to come offline and how that works.
It will.
We'll know.
And if I understood you guys correctly yesterday from a novice standpoint, it really secures our water supply pretty.
Yeah.
That's. Yep.
Yeah, I remember us talking about it even, I think my first term on council, looking out to adding that third one.
That's fearless. This was on my way home. Two weeks from now, we'll be drilling the new.
That's a little note.
Long time coming.
Um, sorry. So if you guys want to have some fun, go out, watch that.
Yeah.
A couple of things to finish up quickly. Uh, I had the opportunity to talk, um, with Culver Union Township Public Library and James Maxwell Smith, some of the other individuals over there. They're currently working on a project that will provide GPS markers on headstones within the Masonic Cemetery. I just think that was cool. I just think that's innovative and forward. I just, a really nice kind of service to provide people to be able to locate. And I just thought that was pretty cool to bring up. They're, they're pretty active over there. They're not just checking in and out books. Um, also last night was able to spend some time with our Lions Club. And that's always a great meeting and they're always trying to get you to join. I'm telling you, I've got more paperwork. But, um, the meeting was excellent and the questions were few, but the, the, the audience was engaged in listening. It was really nice and I, I sort of grabbed the topic out of the air because that's what I do. And the topic was listening. Being able to disagree with one another in town, but recognize the fact that we need to listen to one another. One of the things that over the last year has come up is people are afraid of losing their small town. More so than anything we change about town, that, that is in threat when we don't listen to one another. It's the community that actually makes the small town, not necessarily what we're doing inside of it. I think it's good to be able to get out and talk to different people and listen. Making sure that we always make room for that. And so it was a really great opportunity afforded to me by the Lions Club and I really appreciate it. So that's your feel-good message for the night. Thanks, guys. That's it.
Thank you.
Oh, hey, one last thing. My good friend reminded me, Nancy Miller's corn sign. I forgot one request on my permission that was added in eleventh hour. Nancy Miller would like permission to place her corn sign, that delicious sweet corn, out there on that northeast corner of seventeen and ten. I'd like you guys to approve that if you would, please, and I.
So much.
Thank you.
Again.
Moved by Ms. Monroe, second by Mr. Goodson's. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, same sign.
And Council.
Next on the agenda is the clerk's report.
I have a couple of claims over twenty-five hundred for your approval. Two of them are from Tim Uhas. One is three thousand two hundred and fifty for your installation. And then the other is nineteen thousand nine hundred and fifty for the pier socket project. Um, PJ Sescott, nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight and ten thousand eight hundred and two thirty. Those are for meters that were purchased, um, for and we are reimbursed by the developer already. Um, so it's just a pass through. They are excavating six thousand seven hundred dollars, uh, for park sand. And then, um, in the I N dot gov, three thousand dollars and that, they host our website.
Motion to approve the claims over eighteen hundred? Hundred or whatever the number is.
Ms. Monroe moves to approve claims over twenty-five hundred, may I have a second? Second by Mr. Goodson's. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
Being a lot of, um, hours, but I presented financial reports from January, February, March and April to you. You haven't had time to look that over and I just approved, asked for approval.
Uh, thanks for sending those. I just sent my comments. I, I motioned to, oh, we addressed one of them already tonight, so I motioned to approve the financial reports.
Been moved by Ms. Monroe to, um, approve the financial reports. Second. Second by Mr. Near. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, same sign. All right, attorney's report.
Just a couple of things. Um, Karen, on that Project Hope contract, is that something that you could reach out to their, uh, people and see if they have something already? And if, if they don't have anything, I'd be happy to put something together, but, um, and then the other thing was, uh, Steve Gorski had talked about, um, the prospect of, uh, investigating, appointing some alternates for the Board of Zoning Appeals. And that was just something I wanted to throw out there for you to, um, you know, start considering. Um, it's the appointing authority, uh, that appointed the member that's on the Board of Zoning Appeals has the authority to also appoint an alternate. And so I think, uh, a couple of those are, are Bill's appointments. And then there's the rest are the council's appointments and there's county, uh, two miles zone appointee. So I think.
Does that mean if someone can't go, their alternate could go, like if they're on vacation or something?
Yeah. And, uh, Steve had also talked about, um, you know, putting together some rules of procedures for the Board of Zoning Appeals and, uh, Plan Commission and maybe waiting till next year to build some money in the budget in case they needed me to do any work on that. Um, and, but I think this process that doesn't, wouldn't require any work from me. And, uh, I think I've already provided, uh, Steve and, and Kevin with the email that kind of lays out who the appointees would, would be. And so it's just something to start thinking about if there's people. And oftentimes it's, um, you know, uh, maybe other people are already on the Plan Commission who might be willing to, to do it that have already have a little bit of knowledge about zoning and planning issues. But it also could be an opportunity for somebody else who, who might be interested in serving on a board, but doesn't want to do it all the time, but would just, you know, be willing to, you know, be a pinch hitter here or there, so.
So Sean, is it, um, like if you appoint five alternates? Like, let's say the alternate for Bill's is a guy named Mark. And Bill's going on vacation, does it have to be Mark or could it be any alternate?
That's the unfortunate thing. It has to, it can only be the alternate.
For that seat.
For that seat. So it's not like you have a pool of alternates and anybody can, and.
So we would just advertise for more alternates to be appointed and then pick people to appoint?
Yes.
Sounds like you know me.
That's all I have.
Okay. Council issues, Mr. Near. Ms. Monroe. Mr. Sharty.
None.
I have none, Mr. Goodson's.
Motion to adjourn the claims.
It's been moved by Ms. Monroe to move to claims, second. By Mr. Goodson's. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. We're adjourned now.